The Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. Julius, in the pledge?
I respectfully declare.
First time ever. Tony, you're on deck.
I believe we salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And all please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel will...
We have to start right off with that here.
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd. Here. I'll note that we are being livestreamed right now. It's being pushed out to our YouTube channel. Additionally, anyone that has business before the board, I might ask that they approach the... We don't have a chair in place right now, but I'd ask that they approach the mics so we can pick it up for our purposes and compile it in minutes. Row officer reports and comments. I'm looking around. I'm not seeing any representatives of row officers or row officers themselves here today. Public comments? Does any member of the public who wishes to make public... Dan, approach the bench.
I will be up here. For you that don't know me, I'm Dan Kennedy, Chairman of the Supervisors of Wilmington Township. Joe's not here, but I have another packet to present to Joe.
Joe's right there. I am over here for that.
He just... But we wanted... Brian was going to come with me. He's sick today. We wanted to thank you guys for helping us with Cottage Grove Bridge. The residents of that were landlocked. If we didn't do something with that, nothing decided to do what the bridge in Pittsburgh did, that it did. We got it done before that happened. Unfortunately, we have another one, and it's closed. We had to close the road right now. So we're working hard to get that means road back open in Wilmington Township. We're asking for you guys' help again. I know you're tired of me coming, but...
Who gave him the address down here? Who gave him?
If I remember wrong, he somehow found it.
Without you guys, we couldn't get this stuff done. Unfortunately, for Wilmington Township, it was neglected for years. They knew they had issues, and I told them by now I got the A-Team Supervisors. We're working to get things done out there and get things on the right track. And with your help, it's getting done. So from Wilmington Township and the residents, thank you. The other way is, anything we can ever do for you guys, we're willing to help. I'll give this to Joe.
Exactly, yeah.
Appreciate it. Always good to see you, Dan. I'm going to slip Dan.
Absolutely. You are doing your duty as a supervisor, taking the time to put things together to be able to utilize the money that you're up to.
We drive for any crazy...
Well, everybody does. I know there's at least three of us, so it's not fooling me.
But I'm going to sit and support you guys, too, because that's part of what we should be doing, too.
Oh, we definitely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Will it sit through the government meeting?
Yes.
We're trying to keep it as lively and entertaining as possible.
Gets me out of the truck for an hour.
Any additional comments? Seeing none. This one contractual. We have no response for our properties under bid, no advertising bids or proposals, no receipt of bids or proposals. We do have warrant registers from February 2nd, January 31, and January 28, 2022 for consideration. Give my colleagues a minute to look this over, and then I'll take a motion to accept and file. Warrant register, warrant register's culmination of the county's fiscal process starts... Actually, technically starts with the budget process, but really starts when the department had or a row officer or a member of the administration requests. Anything from staples to association use to a new truck, to a new building. They fill out a purchase order. That purchase order gets sent down to the Controller's Office, who encumbers that order, makes sure that there's money in the budget for it. From there, once it's ensured that there's money in the budget, that purchase order gets sent out to the Board of Commissioners's office. Two commissioners sign off on it to approve it, or don't sign off on it if it doesn't get approved. Then heads back down to the Controller's Office with those two signatures. The Controller authorizes the treasurer to pay it, pay the bill. All bills paid, compiled to the warrant register, which is then sent back to us to approve, or deny at a Board of Commissioners.
Well said.
I'll note, I think your visit here is timely, Mr. Kennedy, because there is a listing here for Wilmington Township, $75,000, which my assumption is that is for the Cottage Grove Bridge. Making that as an assumption.
And we got that check yesterday, and we thank you.
And, you know, we accept your thanks. I should note, we should accept it at least in part, because the dollars that we've been able to allocate actually come to us from the Commonwealth. These are not general fund dollars from the property taxpayers of Lawrence County. These are primarily either liquid fuel dollars or Marcellus dollars that the state put together probably about at least a decade ago. But we're happy to distribute them accordingly. But I do want to make it very, very clear that the dollars we've been able to help your township with as it relates to the two bridges and other bridges throughout the county are primarily liquid fuel dollars that come to us from the Commonwealth. But again, we're happy to help you.
We thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I will move for the motion.
Second. Good motion. Second, any further discussion here? None? Question or motion? All in favor, please give a quick say.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Same, any extensions?
Stands.
Motion carries. No presentation or written communications. Staff reports. If any member of staff here has anything to report, but I'm sure it's already on the agenda. Seeing none, we will want to commission our reports. Mr. Boyd, Dan, you're on deck first. Say four, four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. We'll be voting here shortly on the proposal for the new location for District Judge Russo. And I want to thank Mr. Wish and Mr. Varelli for their patience. We received numerous proposals, and yours obviously rose to the top. And I look forward to the progress that will be made. And I think it should be noted that you look around at the numerous developments your organization has been involved with throughout our community. They're all first-class, and I have no doubt that this one will be as well. So I look forward to casting that vote here shortly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you. Varelli, you're on deck.
I will... I will go with the same sentiments, most definitely. It's been a long time coming. The last couple of years I've been with Morgan, when I knew to the board, I know they struggled with it prior to us being on the board, that it's something else that we can put closure on and have a great product there. And I believe that Magistrate Russo is very happy with everything that Wish Development has done to make it very comforting for him. So again, yes, thank you guys for your patience. And also, Dan, you know, you make it seem like a simple thing that you come and you thank us, but it's a lot of paperwork. It's a lot of work on your supervisors, your part, the secretary's part, getting the paperwork together. Yes, the money's available to all of the 27 municipalities that they would come before us and put something together, but you guys do it. You do it, and you get it done, and it's all to make your community better. So we thank you for taking advantage of the fact that you can utilize the monies that we do receive to make your community better.
We didn't do that. Debbie, my wife, you know how she is.
Yes, we know how...
We challenge her to... Bill, even Bill Humphrey from Taylor City, why don't you just have Debbie do it? So we have Debbie do it. So give her something to do. Now she's going to have a lot to do. We have some other projects coming down the line, so we'll keep her busy.
Very good. That's it.
All right. I've got my colleagues' sentiments. That's... We'll wrap that up in terms of your comments and start the main show.
Oh, may I ask Dan a quick question?
Sure.
Speaking of bridges, and you may recall, a few months ago, we had the opening of the Banks Cover Bridge, which the county owns and maintains. We need to thank you for your cooperation, you and your colleagues. I know you folks did some work around the bridge in terms of culverts and so on, so we appreciate that working relationship. I assume you travel that road a lot. I assume everything's okay with the Banks Cover Bridge, as best you could tell.
It is. We have some ideas of what... We need a logo for Wilmington Township, and it's probably going to be the Banks Cover Bridge. We're proud of that bridge, being in our township, so that's the discussion we had the other day, and I think we're going to adopt it and make that our logo for Wilmington Township.
Make sure the plaque is visible.
I don't want Morgan's name on there.
You're not the only one, boy.
You're fine, Loretta, with this Morgan. You just don't want on it.
You're not the only one.
Oh, jeez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. All right. In terms of process here, this was tabled last week, resolution, which reads, "Whereas Commissioners desire to enter a special contract with Wish Development with the principal place of business in New Castle, PA, 16105, to talk about Wilmington here for the past couple of months. Whereas the Commissioners desire to execute the attached term sheet with Wish Development for Tannen County of Lawrence District Court 53-3-04, the Honorable Rick Russo. And now if it will be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, execute the attached term sheet with Wish Development." The process that will follow for this in terms of voting on it is right now it's on the table, so we'll take a motion to remove it from the table, at which point it will allow us to act on the resolution. So what we'll do is we'll remove it from the table, we'll call on representatives from Wish Development, just to give a brief overview of the project, overview of the process, and then we'll call a vote on it. That sounds good to everybody. So starting off, we'll take a motion to remove Resolution 2022-36 from the table.
Second.
Good motion, second, any further discussion here? None? Question on the motion? Joe, please call a roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, Mike, or Tony, or whoever's willing to present, if you'd be able to approach the bench and just give us an overview of...
You're welcome to pull a chair up if you'd like. My shirt, so you don't have to stand. Camera can catch my balls part.
Good morning, everyone. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for the generous comments. We are very pleased to be partnering, and we do use that word potentially, partnering with the county to provide what I believe will be a very fine governmental-style building, a very professional suit, if you will, for District Justice Russo. So we're here at your convenience, so if there are any questions, interrupt me, and I'll make it fairly short. So the building, obviously, is the 3470 Wilmington, around the former Tuscanese Square. We have presented to the Commissioners and District Justice Russo and the courts a new paint scheme for the building, removing the linnings, using a bronze paint on the turret roof and so forth, prominent signage for the magistrate's office immediately across the street from their current location, right down the street from the State Police Barracks, and two doors back from Cheats, and immediate access to Mitchell Road. The interior will be fitted out with a custom floor plan, which is very generous in terms of the space for current and future use, including District Justice Russo was concerned about the potential for nuptials and the crowds that that would bring, and potential staff growth, and storage, and so forth. So I think we have really a very well-worked through term sheet or a floor plan, which we've, I think, had four or five iterations on at this point. It will receive the same fit and finish that we use for all of our projects, which is a... We're making UPMC happy, which is one of our largest clients. I think we can do this. We have a lot of experience in terms of... Not a lot of experience, but we have very solid experience in terms of secured buildings. We've done some work for the federal and state governments where, including law enforcement agencies, with shadowproof glass and bulletproof glass and wall assemblies and so forth, where we really deliver a prominent and professionally-developed project. So appreciate your trust in us, and we won't let you down.
Questions, comments from my colleagues?
Just very briefly, that it's the planning and working with Magistrate Russo, the time and effort that was spent with that. I know he's appreciative, but I just... My thought is, this is what he has wanted. It suits him. We've met with him, you know, 100%. It's a great project.
I think most present judges would be happy.
Yeah. And like you said, you met with the judge as well, to see it, yeah. Yes.
One thing that ties into this, at least indirectly, is that... And every county is going through this right now, and it's kind of overshadowed by everything in Harrisburg as it relates to reaportment of congressional and legislative districts. But the courts are required every 10 years after the census to review the boundaries of the district judges' districts, of which in Lawrence County, we have four right now: Judge Amody, Judge Cartwright, Judge Nicholson, and of course, Judge Russo. Our courts here at the county level have officially proposed maintaining the current boundaries of those four districts, not making any changes to them. And then, if I'm not mistaken, after a period of time for public comment, they will then submit that proposal to the... I assume it's either the AOPC or the State Supreme Court. I'm not sure which, but it'll go to Harrisburg. And so that's the good news. If that plan holds out, the boundaries will remain as they currently are for the next decade. And then, of course, 10 years from now, I won't be here, but 10 years from now, they'll have to review it again. So I was pleased to see that they're going to maintain the boundaries as they currently are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Just one question for it. Once we entered this contract, when would you expect to be able to deliver the building to Rick?
In the term sheet, you identified 180 days, but I think we can certainly do it faster than that subsequent to these. So I'm assuming that it goes our way. You know, we'll place calls to our HVAC, electrical subs, and so forth. We'll start digging into the engineering on the building. We'll be able to be putting together a finished board to seek approval from Magistrate Russo and this board. In terms of fit and finish, we'll have to identify long lead term items. Doors, for example, are a stupid thing that is always a difficulty, even HVAC units. And so, for example, with HVAC units, we'll get those ordered, but they are potentially very long lead time items. I want to give you... You likely need two to five type units here. We haven't done that engineering yet, but we'll provide new units so that when you're starting out, you have a brand-new assembly. But we have units there. So even if we have to start with a used unit and circle back with a bunch list open, we're pretty darn good about not missing deadlines. We just delivered almost 25,000 square foot, a very challenging build in Hermitage for a medical building in the middle of the pandemic, and we did very well with that. So I see no problems with this. So, you know, a little bit's going to depend on this board in terms of ratification of a contract, and, you know, and feedback in terms of presenting you with material. You've got to catch the ball and log it back to us in a timely manner, and we'll be able to, I think, accelerate off of that 180 days to maybe 20 or so.
You know, we need to be mindful... You touched on it. We need to be mindful on understanding of the fact of the whole issue of... You probably live it every day, the supply chain and your ability or lack thereof to get the necessary materials that you need. We need the understanding of that fact, that that's beyond our control and your control in many respects. Is... Now, I'm going to ask an ignorant question, because I'm a layman, I'm not in your line of work. Given the current weather conditions as well, does a project like this allow you to do a lot of inside work and save a lot... Or save the outside work for better weather conditions? Does that...
Yes and no. So the... Maybe Tony would be better to speak to this, but he's the vast majority of the project management for our company. But first off, we start with the contract. We start with the... We start with the contract, we start with the general engineering, and we assemble this whole permit set. I guess you have to understand what's there. We'll camera all the pipes that are there, make sure that everything's where all the existing ductwork is, and identify what needs to be added, and be able to put the thing together. And then, you know, technically, where we're able to allow even to do demolition, we have to file that permit set, have it reviewed and approved. We have a terrific, terrific code officer in Shannick. Tom McCarty is fabulous and a very workable guy. He's someone who... Make sure you're doing what you need to do, but he's there cooperating to make sure that you can do your job. So I don't anticipate any difficulties in that regard. So yes and no. We would sequence the workforce, whether permits, but there's not that much exterior work. And there's a lot of work that has to happen before any hammers start swinging. So we're front-loading the purchasing, the identification, the fit and finish, the purchasing, so that we can avoid supply chain snags, and we're having to do all that engineering upfront. And then we use excellent local subs where we sequence the work and put it forward, just like any of these other projects.
May I ask another question? So that there's no misunderstanding, and I hope you could reinforce this, that the area that you're designating for the district judge and his staff is not the entire building. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We... Under the term sheet, we had identified 2,800 square feet. We went back because Justice Russo was concerned about having enough room for storage and so forth. We reworked inside a little bit, and I do think it's gotten better with every iteration. So we're now at 2,910 square feet. The entire building's about 52 or so, and then there is the exterior patio, which we will actually put a roof over that, which is... It's not... Certainly not a free room, but we're able to... We don't need to put in new footers and, you know, new cross footing and so forth. We'll be able to enclose that, and that will become the new waiting room. So, no. And then we'll have... We've identified in the term sheet under Article 4, the use, that the landlord will want at least the space to... We're going to negotiate good things to identify uses that are inconsistent. For example, we're not going to put a heavy-drinking bar, a gambling establishment, a... Whatever uses we kind of work out. So...
Well, I appreciate your clarifying that, because I don't want people to have the misunderstanding that we'll be using that entire building.
No, no, no.
Or using a portion of it, not the entire building. So thank you.
Yes, and further, Commissioner, the floor plan is a generous floor plan, very well laid out, but there's a big difference between... Everyone has their sweet spot in terms of what they're able to do. One thing that we're... That Tony is particularly good at is being able to lay out a very efficient space, so that you're not allocating a lot of square footers to hallways and to wasted areas. So when we give you 2,910 square feet, you're getting about the biggest bang you can out of that. And, you know, I think it's fair to say that a lot of other designers, especially somebody who's not interior architectural-oriented, or maybe engineering-oriented, may not be able to achieve those same... That same efficiency in the layout, same flow, and the same livable situation. And just a further comment to the time, we did build into the term sheet that if we're delayed, we have a very stiff monetary penalty that we will pay the county if we don't bring it in on time, and I think it was $300 a day. So we're confident we'll deliver it on time. We're confident, frankly, we'll deliver it early. And of course, there will be a provisor in there that if we are asking for approval on something, and you guys don't give us approval within a reasonable time, then that timeline would be expanded. But we've tried to write our term sheet in a way that makes this a risk-free situation for the county, where we know what we're capable of doing, and we're going to execute our obligations honorably regardless of the situation, but where the county is not trying to be a real estate developer, going out and hiring its own engineering company and its own general contractor, and trying to put together its own permit set and its own construction documents, that's not your expertise. And so I appreciate your wisdom in recognizing that an expert in that area can bring value to the situation, and again, we'll do the job for you.
Just two more things on my end, and we'll... This is a big additional poll vote. Number one, under the... I know the answer was, but under the term sheet, who's covering the cost of the build-out and the engineering?
Well, I think that's the big thing. We're covering the cost of the build-out. You will... District Magistrate Russo will walk in there, either turn on the lights or not turn on the lights, if we have motion controls and dusted on sets and so forth, which we will engage those kinds of technologies so that we have the best energy efficiency we can. But we are carrying 100% of the cost of the build-out, 100% of the cost of the acquisition of the property, renovation of the property, design, the whole shooting match. So again, the risk of the county is... Your obligation is to pay the rent at the end of the day, and it's the same sort of arrangement that we would typically do with some of the larger board... Well, frankly, it's the type of thing we do with all of our in-laws, because this is kind of where we are. We don't look to make money on our construction services. That's how we peddle our real estate and keep things full. And it's been a... Having Tony's expertise in the office allows us to generate designs and figure out what the numbers are, and really present a compelling offering versus a more traditional model where a landlord would say, here's a building, how the ball. Now you're going out and you're hiring, trying to figure out, okay, what architect or engineer do I hire? Is the design good? Okay, what's the paint color? What's the baseboard? What's the millwork going to look like? And all of these things, and then going out and having to assemble a construction set, which would include, you know, all of the spin and finish items, and then go out to bid on it, all of which takes massive time. So I think that we're... I think that going this route, honestly, I think that you're saving literally a couple of years and potentially, you know, potentially, a situation could easily go sideways on you. It's not, you know, it's not a... It can be a complicated... It can be a complicated business. And if you're not doing this every day, yeah, I think that it's something that's well-left to a careful negotiation and someone who does it every day. So thank you.
I'll also add that you guys have probably spent what amounts to a week's worth of work just going back and forth with Rick, going back and forth with Ward, to, you know, do five iterations of drawings, and you've received no compensation for that. And up until now, and even right now, before we called a vote, no guarantee of a contract. So we certainly appreciate, you know, your willingness to put that time and effort in, even in the preliminary stages. Lastly, I'll note that as we've done in previous or in other magisterial offices, specifically the Office of Jerry Cartwright, Matrissla, the Office of Melissa Amody, the staffing numbers have been taken down from what had been traditionally four staff judicially to prejudicially, which in that cost savings is significant, as the average employee per county is around $70,000 a year. My expectation would be that upon the next retirement or resignation out of Magistrate Russo's office, that is something that we consider moving his staff down from four to three, as we've done in other, in some cases, more intensive offices. And that move would effectively pay for the cost of the rent for this space. So just something that keep in mind there.
You know, one other issue as it relates to cost savings, and we tend to forget it or overlook it, but it goes back to the fact that we have four magisterial districts right now, and this proposal that the courts are making would maintain that number. Keep in mind...
to three, as we've done in other, in some cases, more intensive offices. And that move would effectively pay for the cost of, um, the rent for this space. So just something that keep in mind there.
You know, one other issue as it relates to cost savings, and we tend to forget it or overlook it, but it goes back to the fact that we have four magisterial districts right now, and this proposal that the courts are making would maintain that number. Keep in mind, prior to that, we had five.
Right.
And, uh, when Judge Richel retired, as you all remember, a good portion of his district was, uh, tied in or combined with what was then Judge McGrath's district, which is now Judge Russo's, with the exception of Slippery Rock Township, which was added to Judge Cartwright's district. My point, though, is that as a result of going from five to four, at the time, we were renting out in Shenango Township on 422 for Judge Richel's facility. That's gone, and we're saving money as a result of no longer paying rent on that, on that particular office. And again, I think that's been either overlooked or forgotten, and I think that point needs to be made as well, now that we're down to four. Three of which, three of which we own. Obviously, Judge Modi's right here in, in the old courthouse. Judge Cartwright and Judge Nicholson's buildings are both owned by the county. This one, of course, will be, will be rented. But the fact is, we're down to four as compared to five, and we've had a cost savings since we're no longer paying rent at what was Judge Richel's facility. Thank you for letting me know that. I gotta get a glass of water. Excuse me a minute, please. Give you one second. Does anybody want a bottle of water? I'll be right back, pardon me.
And we don't even have elevator music, so a lot of the time.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. I was just gonna start the anthem.
That was a good point that Dan did bring up, that we were paying a, a fifth spot. Although, when that closed, I know we, we did, the board, board before us rented additional spots at the Alls House building, an additional spot. I mean, it's been a long time coming, it's been painstaking. It, excruciating to the point that, you know, trying to, to, to make some kind of a decision like that, yeah, it's just, it, it's good to actually just bring it to that close. And, and again, I say, you know, with, with, um, with, uh, Judge Russo, that the add-on was the magistrate district from the Shenango Township area, and his preference was always to have it in Shannick. So that was something that I just felt that, that we needed to make sure that he was comfortable with that. And again, comfortable with the location, you know, this is, and he worked very well with you, you guys sitting together. This is his choice, this is what he wants. The timeline is, is, is good because we've always promised, well, it'll be your last winter, it'll be your last spring, and it, it's, it's finally, it's coming to fruition. And that's another page that we get to close, so, um, that's good.
Thank you all for your indulgence, and forgive me, I got one more thought I have. I forgot my water. We would be remiss if we didn't thank Mr. Alls House, who has been our landlord for decades. Some of, you know, we had Judge McGrath, we had Judge Sedeker, Judge Reed, and I think it may go back as far as Judge Kenahan. I don't know if you remember Judge Kenahan or not, but, um, I think his, I, I know for a fact that Judge Sedeker was there in the early eighties. So that's how far, that's 40 years ago. So we've, we've been a tenant of, of the Alls House family for years, so we need to thank them for all their years and the relationship we have with them. So thank you again.
Great, anything for? All right, on, on that note, I will call, um, take a motion on Resolution 2022-36, um, executing the attached term sheet with which development for, um, the new magisterial office location. Second, the motion's second, is there any further discussion here in non-question motion? Joe, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you guys again.
Thank you for your patience.
And we'll get over an executed, uh, uh, term sheet to you, or execute a contract to you as soon as, as soon as possible.
Perfect.
You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting if you've got to take off, we, we understand.
I can only do so much excitement.
Some of them said it's kind of like washing paint dry.
Well, you move it along, I'll, I'll say that, that's, uh, that's appreciated.
Can you tell how many viewers we do have?
Uh, yeah, probably one or two.
Okay, well, because I was, I mean, it has nothing to do with you guys, though, but.
There's a little person logo on that.
I, I mentioned, uh, at the Neighborhood Watch Meeting, that Lower East Side, our meetings are, are live.
Is that five?
See, if, if it's, if it's anybody, Kenny Brice, if you guys are, are watching from, uh, your locations, thank you for tuning in. I mentioned it, it's, uh, at the Neighborhood Watch Meeting last night, that we have a meeting every, every Tuesday at 10 o'clock, and, and listen in and know what's happening with your, uh, with your, with your government.
Hi, Mom. Who's four, we're up to five.
I, I, it, it's them, it has to be, has to be the Neighborhood Watch, very good. Thank you, Allison, thank you.
All right, up next, um, we have a, uh, Resolution to motion, Paul Boudreaux, approve the change, a change order with Allison Park, for the Banks Covered Bridge project, actually. This was a, uh, due to overruns and underruns of contract items which occurred throughout performance of work, the deletion of contract items, the addition of new items. Specifically, I'll note that, uh, because this is, is a large change order. It's $121,876 and 42 cents, um, increase. What that amounts to is the bridge had deteriorated far more than, than we originally anticipated, um, when that contract was bid out. And upon removing certain portions of the bridge, they uncovered that level of deterioration. Obviously, that took a lot more in terms of costs, um, to fix. And so this is just approving a change order, accommodating that cost increase. And, uh, again, this is ensured that bridge, um, remains in operation for hopefully centuries to come.
And as we noted earlier, these dollars are not property tax dollars, they are liquid fuel dollars, as we recall as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, Joe, what, uh, what number looks best?
Zero, four, two.
Four, two. Um, I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2022-42.
So moved.
Second, the motion is second, any further discussion here in non-question motion? Joe, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, for free, um, David Allen, who we've actually recently appointed to the, uh, Planning Commission, um, has recently moved to, I believe, is it, is it Beaver County?
Butler.
Butler County, uh, Butler County. Uh, and as a result, he can no longer remain on Lawrence County Planning Commission. Uh, and so to that end, we are appointing Cindy Moravito of Elwood City Borough to the Planning Commission with term to expire on September 31, 2025. This is filling David Allen's, um, unexpired term. Cindy, uh, was a former staffer with Senator Vogel's office, did a phenomenal job when she was on staff there. Attended every, at least every, the few Planning Commission meetings I attended, she was always there. And is just a wonderful, wonderful person, both her and her, um, her husband Bob are, are, are great people, great community-minded people. And we're excited to have Cindy, who currently serves as an alternate, uh, bopped up to a full-time, um, unpaid Planning Commission position. So unless there are any questions or comments, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion, but the second, is there any further discussion?
Just, just a quick note, Mr. Allen, I'm sorry?
Well, yeah, I was, I had a note too about the expiration date of that, too.
Is, is it, is this incorrect on our?
Yeah, and I'm, because David Allen was appointed to, to, to Don McCary, yes.
Oh, since the expired term, yeah.
So, yes, so, um, her term is, this will expire at the end of this year. I'm almost 99.9% sure.
Seems to be, yeah.
Because when I reached out to Cindy, I said, you know, it will be for the year, but obviously, you know, so I can.
Then the, you'll notice it says 2025, that's, so make that 2022.
Okay. Sorry.
No, I'm glad you caught that. And what I was going to mention is that, uh, even though it's, it's, it's not a legal requirement of any sort, this board and prior boards of commissioners have always made an effort to have a resident from the Borough of Elwood City, which is the county's largest borough, on, on the commission, and as noted, uh, Mr. McCary served for many years before him. Bob Powell?
Yes.
Served for many, many years. We had good representation from Elwood City Borough. Mr. Allen is still the Borough manager.
Yes.
But as Commissioner Boyd noted, he, uh, recently moved out of the county, and, and one of the requirements we have is you have to be a county resident, serve on this commission. Cindy will step right in, and she'll, she'll be a welcome addition to this board, so I'm, I'm glad to second. I'm willing to amend my second if, if Loretta's willing to.
Yeah, we'll follow. So motion, Loretta, second, Dan, 2022. I'll take a, Joe Vogler.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Cindy. Um, up next, a couple modifications, uh, requests for, um, our, our CDVG. Y'all think, Bob, that we would team. I mean, what do we, this would be 44.
Yeah.
Uh, what do we have going on with that one?
So I have two here. Um, my first is a mo, modification request. We have to do a modification request anytime we add a new activity. So this will be a modification request to our CDVG CD program, where, um, Elwood City had originally allocated funding to a, a small business grant. They haven't been able to utilize that or do anything with it. Um, and this contract ends at the end of this year. So we are modifying our fiscal year 2020 CDVG contract to, um, add the Elwood City's TEAMS project. And the TEAMS project is the, the, the temporary emergency assistance through meals program that El Cap has been doing for our 23 non-entitlements and Union Township and Shenango Township. They have been doing it in Elwood City the entire time, even though Elwood didn't originally, uh, allocate funds there, they, they were still running the program there. So they'll be able to basically invoice us for that, that, that project. So we just have to go through the motions and see what we want to keep in mind. The total amount is $57,011.32.
They originally, I know, attempted, and it was, it was well-intentioned, structure a business grant program for businesses which were impacted by COVID-19. The issue they ran into is CDVG has such intensive reporting requirements, and very, very few businesses under CDVG's guidelines and under CDVG's regulations would be able to successfully apply for that program if the money's just remained unexpended. As a result of that, uh, and I'm glad they're moving it to the TEAMS program, it, it, it covers, uh, another need in the community. And it's a hell of a lot easier to draw down than, um, than CDVG's business requirements. That, the CDVG program is very much unlike any, any other business grant program run by the county or run by the state, uh, or even the feds for the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic. It was just such an effort for a business to be able to qualify for that specific program. And it was an effort created, um, by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. There's, there were just too many regulations in place to allow that program to be successful as it's structured under CDVG. So I'm very glad to see that they are, are moving to TEAMS. Well-intentioned on their end.
Yeah, I mean, they just said, try to get the call, especially with the COVID regulations.
I assume at your public hearing yesterday, as required, did anybody show up to testify?
Thank you. It's a good, you know, because we really, I mean, we got a lot of CDVG funding, you can use it for a lot of different, a lot of different things. I wish, you wish we were, I'm actually, I'm looking at you, Dan, because, you know, but I don't know if Willington Township would even be able to qualify for, for area just because the income level, I, I assume are probably too high in Willington Township. Um, so most we really can do is housing rehab and stuff for, select a few portions of, uh, of our communities. All right, I'll take a motion to approve, 2022-44.
So moved.
Second, the motion is second, any further discussion here in, uh, question, motion? Joe, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'm not, I'm not used to hearing your, you're gonna, that's a low octave level. Well, uh, Resolution 2022-45, again, a, a amendment for, um, Elwood City's CDVG, anything we have on?
So this is another modification. This is under our fiscal year 2019 CDVG program. They originally had put $16,000 towards, um, removal of light. And we got the, the application approved, and in the meantime, the borough already went and demolished the structure that they applied for. So there was, there's no need for the light fund, and, and there's no need for them to utilize CDVG funds since we have the redevelopment funding funds that we have. And like Morgan said, CDVG makes things very, very difficult. So we are going to utilize the, move that money and create a new project, which is Elwood City Housing Rehab, which is fantastic. They have not used CDVG to do housing rehab, and they do have a need down there. So El Cap's very excited. It's not a lot of money, but hopefully, maybe next time we do an application, we can get them to allocate some more funds there. Elwood City does have an alumni block area that we've been able to use. They've done a lot of street program, street improvements, and they're going to get to the point where they're not going to do any more streets because that's all they've been doing. So, um, I'm excited to see them use housing dollars down there. They do have a good, they have a home program down there, and they were prepared township in Elford. But these ones will only be for Elwood City residents, Lawrence County.
Oh, no, that, Elwood City, that was actually one of the areas that, that we considered when we initiated the Union Township project. I remember sitting down and having conversations going on, specifically Elwood City Business District. You know, I, I've actually been approached by, even one of the council members down in Elwood, uh, Mr. Ovial, within the last month about potentially structuring another project like the Union Township project in Elwood City. And I think it's absolutely something. I mean, we're, we're starting to really see some success in getting funded, um, in Union Township. And we've seen that success without a whole lot of investment made by either county or Union Township. You know, I think we're still, you know, even with, uh, the designs that we're going to have to pay for, for, um, the sidewalk installations, we'll still be under, my assumption, $50,000 in local, local costs for what, right now, we're up to one, uh, or over $1.5 million, um, which we're, you know, we've been very successful leveraging in this grand street. So again, I think, I think Elwood, um, assuming the Union Township project continues to successfully progress as we look to target other areas, I think Elwood's ripe for the opportunity, especially when you consider the growth down there from, um, from Stonecrest, uh, as well as the fact that Allegheny County is running out of business sites and pushing growth further north in Beaver, Butler, and Lawrence Counties, is something to consider. And I'll take a motion on Resolution 2022-45.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, any further discussion here in non-question, motion? Joe, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything, very much. Up next, Scott? This should be a pretty simple one.
Yes, sir.
When you come, I just, when you come, I just vote yes. Usually a pretty easy one. I know, I don't understand this stuff, and the time it would take for you to understand this stuff, I would be, it, it, a, a five-term commissioner.
Yeah, good morning. This is a new contract. This is what we've been doing, it's kind of NHDS, and Allegheny's Unlimited Contract will run from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. The contract will not exceed $50,000. And this is just sort of a byproduct of what we've seen locally with staffing shortages. We've got to span our net providers. They do, uh, feminine community services for our developed and older age residents, and they are located in Johnstown, Pennsylvania. So they're coming here to serve our families. So hopefully, this may be the last one I have of the year. It looks like this would wrap up our last, uh, contract agreement, so.
Questions, comments? I'll take a, uh, motion to approve Resolution 2022-46.
So moved.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion here in non-Joe, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Um, lastly, and that, that number eight is, I think, uh, Vanessa and I, mostly Vanessa, um, but Vanessa and I took care of that. So number seven will be the last item that we're voting on today. This is, uh, in relation to the county's TFSAP program. Since we do a lot in afternoons, let me explain what that is. That is, um, it's effectively a program whereby the State Department of Agriculture provides counties with funding, um, to help alleviate food insecurity in their counties. Lawrence County's, uh, allocation for fiscal, uh, '21, I think it was '21, '22, was roughly, I want to say, 140, 130 to 140,000 dollars. Due to inflationary pressures, um, they've allocated some more money to that program, the State Department of Agriculture, that is. This budget adjustment reflects that additional, uh, allocation. I'll note that the program itself, what Lawrence County is structured, we actually contract with the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank to administer the program on our behalf. And, and the way that that program is administered, the global food banks have the ability to read, or churches, or anyone providing food, food insecure individuals have the ability to reach out to Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank. Note that they're from Lawrence County, and the food bank in turn, um, through this funding provides them directly with food for food insecure residents. So it's, it's a great way that Department of Agriculture is able to help our residents, um, and, and now more than ever is needed, um, the potential economic impacts of COVID, COVID-19 is having on Lawrence County families. Questions, comments on that?
Uh, Pittsburgh, Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank.
The Pittsburgh, Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank has done a tremendous job. In fact, when I became a commissioner, the food distribution was done in-house. We had an employee under the jurisdiction of the, under the umbrella of the commissioners who oversaw that program and ran it. And at some point, I can't remember exactly when, but the food, the food bank approached us and said, hey, here's an alternative way of doing it. And, uh, I think Ed Fosnot might have been commissioner at that point. But we, we went along with that proposal, and it was a good decision because they.
Absolutely.
I know you both. And we have carried them and the good work that they do. So glad to see we're getting a few more dollars.
I'll actually note that, uh, previously, Lawrence County, Allegheny County were two counties that contracted with the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank for the administration of this program. I believe that they just added, and I always get confused in terms of what programs they're implementing, but I believe that they just added Washington County. And the commissioners down there voted to enter into agreement with Pittsburgh Food Bank to administer their specific program. Our friends down there, Diana Reid Vaughn, Larry Maggi, and Nick Sherman. But, uh, that, it's, it's a program that actually optimizes efficiencies because instead of having to have each county have one or two people manning the food program, the food bank's able to do it at a much reduced cost from the administration side, which then allows more food to flow out to our communities.
Just to, to add to that, um, I've, I've worked a bit closer with them just because of my affiliations with, with different groups. And, um, they are constantly reinventing and, and analyzing and getting to the best possible products that they have, and even the distribution parts of them, that they can get them to pick the boxes that are pre-done, they're made, to pick them up, to take them to your site. It's very quickly, very well done. They're, they're a great operation. A great operation, yes.
Um, on that note, I'll take a motion to approve 2022-47.
So moved.
Second, the motion is second. Is ready for discussion here in non-question motion. Joe, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillvogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. No organs on the table for induction or final action. Next commissioner's meeting is 10 a.m. Tuesday, February 15th. Um, in the commissioner's room, uh, meeting room, there will be a prison board meeting on Wednesday, February 16, 2022, in the commissioner's meeting room. Uh, and the courthouse will be closed February 21st in observance of President's Day. Am I, am I correct in the sense, we're having a retirement board meeting coming up at some point, too? Only don't we have it upstairs? You're right.
Is it next week?
Might be next week.
I think it's might be next week.
Yeah, just thinking in terms of, so that sound will come up shortly. It'll be after a commissioner's meeting, whether it be next week or three weeks from now. But just wanted to note that. Any additional public comments? Next. Always good to see you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just, you know, you guys are talking about bridges, and obviously a couple weeks ago with that Pittsburgh Bridge collapse. Are you guys working with either PennDOT or different municipalities on trying to fix any of the bridges that might be created for by PennDOT over this year or next couple of years?
Yeah, so predominantly from a municipal standpoint, um, the municipalities reach out to us for those bridges become in poor condition, as, as Wilmington Township has done recently with both Cottage Grove and Means Road. Uh, and then if we're in a position to help out the municipalities, um, we, we almost always do. Um, in terms of our own bridges, we're constantly analyzing those to make sure that there's, there's very little risk, um, if not no risk of something like what happened in Pittsburgh happening in Lawrence County. And right now, um, all of county-owned bridges, our engineers have determined are safe to drive on. Um, but again, we continuously assess that annually to make sure that continues to be the case. And we address any maintenance issues with those bridges as, as they're found.
Coincidentally, uh, Taylor Engineering, which is in the contract, may be happening as we speak, but the largest bridge the county owns is in Elwood City Borough, the Ewing Park Bridge or the Sergeant Sago Bridge. It is being inspected. I don't know if you saw a press release, but it is being inspected, uh, which, as Mr. Boyd said, we do periodically. But, uh, you know, our role is the bridges that we own, the 28 bridges that we own, if you include the Inter Belt. And, uh, the dollars that we get from the Commonwealth through liquid fuels, as best we've been able to do, we've tried to help other municipalities, Perry Township. Helped them at least twice in the last decade, a couple of bridges in their township. We've assisted North Beaver with at least, North Beaver Township with at least two that I can think of. But our role as commissioners, first and foremost, are those bridges that we own and we're responsible for. You may want to, you're, you're welcome to give Bill Humphrey a call at Taylor Engineering. Bill's an open guy. He would be very happy to review with you the bridges that we own and the conditions that they're in. But Mr. Boyd was correct. We're on top of the many of them, well, Banks Covered Bridge, we just, we just repaired it. And, uh, but most of our county bridges are, are in good shape.
Thank you. I'll also note as well, there are, throughout the years, and previously, this is, this predates Loretta and I, previously, the only funding stream through which the county had to repair its bridges was traditional liquid fuels allocations, uh, which the county receives every year and which the municipalities receive every year, um, for both road and bridge repairs. The state, over the course of, over the course of past 15 years, has produced, I want to say, three more funding streams specific to bridge and roadway repairs. Two of those, Act 44 and Act 89, are specific to county-owned, in Lawrence County's case, county-owned bridges. Um, and those accounts, we're fortunate, we have a significant amount of money in those accounts, which internalizes us to use liquid fuels allocations to give out to municipalities. The other account is interesting. It's Act 13, which is generated through Marcellus dollars. That account is actually specifically for municipally-owned bridges. And so the county receives, and it's been decreasing in previous years because drilling operations across the state of Pennsylvania have decreased. Um, so the amount of money that we receive from those impact fees has, has decreased. But that specific fund is specific to municipal-owned bridges on Pennsylvania's Transportation Improvement Program. Um, and so through that mechanism, we're able to help out a lot of municipalities. With Brad Dando, two in Perry Township, two in North Beaver. I think one of the ones in North Beaver was taking care of traditional liquid fuels. I might be wrong on that. That, that account, uh, because we've used it so heavily in the last couple of years, it, it, it has a, a low fund balance right now. But obviously, you know, as that fund balance grows and is replenished and as needs appear, we allocate that money as, as appropriate to, to make sure that, do our part in making sure that those municipal bridges continue to be safe for the residents of Lawrence County. You know, people always forget, um, you know, transportation isn't just getting cars across bridges or cars across roads. Transportation's economic development. And without bridges, without roadways, our residents are unable to connect to the local economy, uh, which in turn, um, you know, it's prohibited the Lawrence County's economic growth. So, you know, it's, it's absolutely critical that we continue to maintain our roadways, our bridges, our highways, because without those, we really wouldn't have an economy.
No, Nick, we mentioned the 28 bridges the county owns and maintains. Mercer County has over 250 county-owned bridges. So they even have an in-house bridge department. They have almost 10 times the number of county-owned bridges that we have. Keeps their hands full.
I'm sure it does.
Oh, and by the way, I need to digress a second. Speaking of Mercer County, I meant to tell you, Commissioner Scott Boyd's sister passed away.
Oh.
About a week ago, so if you want to send her, next time you see her, I just wanted to make note of that. I forgot to try to tell you. Your sister passed. I'm sorry.
Any additional public comments?
Nick, I have your packet. I'll give you my packet.
Thank you. Uh, hearing none, Lawrence County Board of Commissioners is adjourned.